I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose nation under God, indivisible, and every being in its cause.
Viera.
I'm here.
Here, Rita. Rita, absent, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly, here. Holly, here. Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald, here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling, here. Thompson. Thompson, absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman. Pittman, absent.
He's here somewhere.
We just mentioned our national.
And then that look at Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Pulos.
He's here too.
Pulos.
It's here.
Here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here. Valado.
Here.
Valado, here. So let's. How about, how about, how about, Rita?
Now I need a motion to retire to post session for consideration of pending litigation made a motion. Um, on Paulie's second by Alderman Dexter Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go. Need a motion to recontinue the regular session. Got a motion by Alderman Pulos the second on Dexter Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any presentation of your opinion, I need a motion to approve the city council meeting on the date of June the 19th, 2018, and the date of July the 24th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Valado, second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye.
Thank you very much. Next we move on to public comment again. Anyone's free to comment within three minutes on both on the agenda. Use your name and address.
Sure. Carolyn Pace Green, 2731 Orchard Streets. Accounts payable, mad bombers, $12,000. Did that come from the taxpayers?
Came from the budget.
Okay, so it came from the budget?
Yes.
So that came out of taxpayer funds. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Need your name and address.
Sure. Val Quixote, 12911 Greenwood Avenue. I'm just here to give a quick update about the tree canopy. It was an initiative started with Alderman, Holly, and Fernwald and myself last fall. This spring we planted 39 trees. September 22nd, we will be planting an additional 46 trees. This will be with the matching fund grant from Openlands as well as a donation between Morton and Marbrito. So I hope everyone comes and these trees are, we're going to be, the first 39 trees were on the southeast side of Blue Island. We are now targeting the northwest side. We will be meeting at a trees memorial. I just spoke to the principal. And then hopefully at Currie's School. And then we will be dividing up our all the tiers from there. And so that'll be this fall, all the tree we cross that came in from the Alderman, from Public Works, from notes on my front porch, to Ions, it will all be honored. So there will be a total of 85 trees that will go in this year in '18. Because of this initiative and because of the matching grants, we have secured another grant for 75 trees for '19. And that is through the Great Lakes Initiative, Regional Initiative. Areas to be targeted for next year, I know I'm running out of time. Will be the first ward and hopefully we can have some outreach at Blue Island Rett Center for classes as well as the fourth, the southeast side. And with this grant, there will also be some training involved. So you will definitely want to work with Eisenhower High School.
Thank you.
Okay.
Before you leave, since I had you up there.
Appreciate it.
I want to thank you and everybody who's underneath.
It's been a tremendous effort.
Throughout the years of what you've done for the planters up and down Western Avenue, what you're doing now with the tree canopy, working with the Alderman and everyone. Again, thank you, all of us of the city, to you.
Charles DeAlderman and all of, anyone else who helped out with these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll move on to report a city official presentation of resolutions as a proclamation. It's regarding September National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and the reasons follows. City of Buella proclamation, again, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and the reasons follows. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the United States and the second leading cause of death among people ages 10 to 24. And whereas the city of Buella, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, also known as CPS, and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public and suicide and mental illness remain taboo to talk, to speak on. And whereas each member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping people, helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Domingo F. Vargas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Buella this day. Do we need a motion?
No.
No? Okay. So that's the proclamation. Now on a personal note, and I don't know if you know this. Back in 1994, my late boss, and I'll name him, the late Nicholas DeJean committed suicide. So it hit hard back then. And to this day, I still remember that, receiving the phone call about that. And when, and then you start thinking, could I have done something? Could I have stopped it? But no. There's diseases out there, mental diseases. No matter whether you take medication or you don't take medication. Unfortunately for him, he thought he needed medication. And it came down that his boss, Valado, he is a pathologist even to this day. And most recently, and this, I think I mentioned this a year ago, I have a friend who works for an airline and they discovered her, she had not taken her medication in those far northern suburbs. And they, they were able to save her. Again, working through our 911 here and they got in contact with the police department and they saved her. Again, it's something that touches home. And again, as it says here, call people, text them, show their appreciation because life is too short. Seriously, life is too short. So I'll leave it at that. Next, mayor's announcements. I got some information here. I'll make an announcement. I don't know if you know this couple, they're very active in Blue Island in the car scene, you see them around. Candilo and Sue as far as, they were involved in a very serious motorcycle accident on Sunday night. From what I picked up, the most recent information is that he has broken bones, but he'll be okay. She's the one that's concerned because according to the latest thing that I picked up on Facebook information is that she has a swollen print and some bleeding. Again, supposedly allegedly a DUI driver struck them on Sunday night while arriving at Harley. Again, I don't know whether it occurred here or where it occurred, but it did happen on Sunday night. Keep them in your prayers. Again, a couple that was very active, is very active and we pray that everything turns out to the best of them and their family. On another note, and we've addressed this with the local police, our police department, we've addressed this to the local authorities, and I'll just mention this. We're going to keep an eye on this again, whether it crosses beyond the personal members' rights about life matters, these bulletins that went on in the neighborhoods, in certain neighborhoods in Buella, not in all of them. Again, I personally am against what is mentioned here and I will fight to the end to make sure this is not our community and what they propose to instill in people's lives or in their ideas. But we will keep an eye on, as long as I'm mayor, we're going to keep an eye on you. Again, I think the cowardice to do this and put this up at night where nobody can see you shows you the type of persons or persons they are. So I'll just leave it at that. City clerk's business.
Yes, I have four requests this evening, Your Honor. First one is a motion to approve a block party request located in 2508 Collins Street on Sunday, September 2nd, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Tom Holly. Do I have a second by Alderman Ossling? Any questions? Now roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
As I have, you have approved a block party request located at 44th and Winkle on Saturday, August 18th, 12 noon to 7:00 p.m.
I have a motion by Alderman Dexter Johnson, second by Alderman Valado. Any questions? Roll call please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor. Next, I need a motion to approve a tech proposal for BBQ Brews and Bluegrass. That's what we're gonna treat in on Sunday, August 26th, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Motion by Alderman Valado, second by Alderman Frausto. Any questions?
Question? Is this a discount for the Alderman? And I don't think so. All right, I thought I had.
Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, I need a motion to approve two brews nights to be held at York and Western to Gregory on Monday, August 20th and 27th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I have a motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Pulos. Any questions? Go ahead.
Who's conducting this?
This is the market, the street market. And I guess there's mostly something to reach out to for babies, for all of them. Any other questions?
The street market?
You mean the farmer's market? Farmer's market. Okay. Farmer's market.
Radiance coordinated.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Radiance requests.
Now roll call please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City treasurer. Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. All the elements were received recognition statement ending July 31st, 2018. Need a motion?
Need a motion by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Fernwald. Any questions? Roll call please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Eleven eyes, one million.
Thank you very much. Second item, the transfer of funds from restricted to general fund and unrestricted funds. I get a mortgage on that. I have a motion.
Motion by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Tom Holly. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Lastly, consul, I appreciate, sorry to be rude, but last consul, there was a resolution for the bank, a Berkeley Bank, that was passed. There was a miscommunication. There was two resolutions in there. One was blank, one was filled. You passed the one that was filled. We need to pass the second one now that is filled and this is for the tip, tip seven. Need a motion?
Need a motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Ossling. Any questions? Now roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Lastly, just to inform the consul, the audit you should be receiving the final order, 2 South of Seventeen shortly. We wired, you know, to your technology. Then we'll discuss it later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any city internal business? We've already done that, correct? Community reports, community development committee?
I don't have a formal report, Your Honor, but we did meet on last Tuesday and there are two items on the agenda for approval for today. The first is a grant application that was submitted by Tenochtitlan Restaurant at 12947 Western Avenue. The committee reviewed plans and discussed the plans with Eli Rodriguez, who's the owner, and has approved a matching grant of up to $5,000 for improvements to be made at Tenochtitlan. The plans, I believe, are in part of the agenda. I would like to make that in a form of a motion.
I have a motion second by Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
The next item is a grant application by the Fraternal Order of Eagles at 2427 Grove Street. They are building a, a pavilion, thank you. Didn't start with a P. A pavilion in the back of the Eagles and they're going to improve that whole area with landscaping and make it a usable area for the community, for community events and other events that will happen at Eagles Hall. After discussing and looking at the plans, the community development committee approved a matching grant of up to $5,000 for the construction of the pavilion. And I'd like to make that in a form of a motion.
I have a motion second by Alderman Valado. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 4th at 7:30 p.m. and Speaker, Councilor, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Finance committee met on August 7th. Members present, Alderman Thompson, Holly, Fernwald, Viera, Ossling, and the accent was Alderman Frausto. Also present were Director Mike Marzal and Bobby Manbach. No public comment. Committee approved the following accounts payable for August 15th, 2018 in the amount of $999,635.47. And some of the large invoices for Metro South redevelopment agreement, this is the second of four installments, that was $274,201.73. The next one was the Cal said trail expense, that was $167,550.24. Then it was the health insurance for $144,970.44. There was a legal settlement for $87,500. Professional services, that was $32,749.64. The employee health insurance, again, $24,957.47. And another legal settlement for $18,863.60. So that brought the income to a walk. So I made a motion to approve.
I have a motion second by Alderman Fernwald. Any questions?
No question.
Alderman Valado?
Metro South parking lots, I know we've discussed before, we're giving them any rebate, okay, we're gonna, what's the plan?
They have a timeline, we're gonna, we do that, all their parking lots around them.
That was made in writing, part of the deal, to get the rebate?
All right. Alderman Pittman, any questions? No, that's it?
I have a motion.
A motion, who's gonna second?
Fernwald's second.
Okay. Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next is the payroll for July 27th, 2018, in the amount of $318,395.16. I make that in the form of a motion.
I have a motion second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call please.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, the committee approved the renewal of vision insurance for employees. This is funded by the employees 100%. This is a one-year contract and I need a motion to approve it.
Motion second by Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Valado.
Aye.
Valado, aye. Twelve eyes.
Thank you.
Under discussion, there were three properties requesting waiver of fees. One was at 1949 Grove Street to waive $800. The committee approved it if the property comes up to compliance by November 31st, 2018. There is an outstanding water balance and that was deferred to the Municipal Service Committee. There also was a waiver of fee for 2054 120th Street in the amount of $9,450 that was denied. And 2755 Broadway, the waiver request was $1,500 and that was denied. No further business. The meeting was adjourned at 7:35. Our next finance meeting is August 21st, 7:00 East, ANX.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, Your Honor. It's our minutes for the meeting of July the 10th. Present were Deputy Chief Arzad, Chief Dan Rita, Chief Don Marchbanks, Alderman Kevin Donahue, Alderman Ken Pittman, and myself, absent were Alderman George Pulos and Alderman Dexter Johnson. Also in attendance were Scott Conger and Carolyn Pace Green. The meeting was called to order at 6:04. This is a motion to approve the June minutes by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Pittman. Motion carried. There were no citizens' concerns under the fire department. Emergency call response for June, there was 216 EMS responses, 125 fire responses, 33 auto aid responses, and one usual aid response. Medical reimbursement services collected $49,317.60 for the month of June. Fire recovery received in June, $1,576. And false fire alarm fees collected were $100. Under calls of interest, on June 6th, there was a house fire at 12919 Aberdeen in County McCarth. Also on July 6th, a dryer fire at 304 West 141st Street in Blue Island. During the 7th, there was a building fire at 2020 West 119th Street in Blue Island. During the 16th, there was a house fire at 12845 Francisco Avenue in Blue Island. And during the 30th, there was a building fire at 12454 South Winchester in County McCarth. Under general information, union negotiations are ongoing. Marine 2 and 2100 were on hand for the Dragon Boat races. And the eligibility exam was held on June 23rd. 30 applicants showed up and 16 passed. Under maintenance, preventive maintenance on apparatus is ongoing. Ambulance 2172 is back in service after some bodywork was done. Ambulance 2162 went into service. For fire prevention, Inspector Whitlock spent the month conducting annual inspections and doing computer work. Notice went out for the two open 7G sponsored fire prevention offices. Under training, members completed 522.5 hours of training under operations. New nozzles have arrived and have been put into service on the first, on the three first out apparatus. Chief Rita is looking at changing the